Good morning and welcome to the Town Meeting Program here on KLAM. The 10:00 AM hour here on this Friday, and a familiar voice will be joining us. We're going to get to have a chat with Gay Wellman of Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska, and hear about pretty much everything they have coming up in the first three months of the new year in 2022. A very comprehensive discussion, which we, by the way, will supplement on our YouTube channel when this version of the, or when this talk show goes up there at the Cordova TV YouTube channel. There's a document we'll be talking about a lot in this show, and we will put that document there so you can kind of follow along and have easy access to all of the material she's talking about. And as is so often the case when we visit with Gay, the material is not just for families that already maybe have an Alzheimer's or a dementia patient, but think that might be a possibility in the near future, or might be a possibility at any time in the future, even if you don't think there's a likelihood of it happening. There's still things that you can learn to kind of keep an eye on things, and know the difference between some of the normal mental changes that come with aging versus those that could be a sign that Alzheimer's is on, on the docket, as one could say. Our program is always brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications. They're your local cellphone and wireless data provider, and they provide your local talk show. So let's see what Gay Wellman has to tell us here today on the Town Meeting Program while we focus on Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska. So Gay Wellman, it is time for us to visit again. And first off, most importantly, how are you these days?
Well, I'm doing pretty good. I had my hip replacement, and I'm beginning to walk around a little bit better. Not as much as I'd like to, but that's what happens when you sit so much.
New and functional parts, isn't it?
What's that?
New and functional parts. They can just, they can replace us piece by piece.
Exactly. I think next is the knees. They're beginning to show signs.
All right. Well, look for good, look for those Black Friday specials.
Yes, there you go. Good idea.
Well, it's always good to visit with you about coming, what's coming up, because Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska has so many assets for, for people dealing with this, and not just Alzheimer's, but you know, the information you can provide on the full spectrum of dementia. And let's, let's kind of, before we get into the calendar of what's coming up in the first quarter, let's highlight this new program, the Mind Aerobics.
Yes, this is a very exciting program that we've actually had up and running this past quarter. They've at least done one class that went very successfully, apparently, and just finished up. And that's, it's a, there's a two different sections for this. One is called Mind Sharperner, and the other one is called Mind Works. Ken Helander, who's relatively new to our organization, but has been around for a long time, and he's absolutely wonderful, has kind of headed this up. But there's a couple other education specialists that are helping him with it. And the basic idea for this program is that it's actually based on exercises that are based on, based on the principles of neuroplasticity. You know, that we're constantly able to rewire and build stronger neural pathways. And we've heard a lot about the different brain games that you can play and like that. While it's not a prevention, it does help you set yourself up for a few of the consequences of if you develop dementia. So the Mind Sharperner is really meant for people who are maybe a little bit worried about it, but you know, they're not really, you know, they're not really caught up. They haven't certainly gotten a diagnosis or anything. But you know, as, as we get older, some of us begin to worry a little bit about, I'm not finding my words as well, or, oh, where are my keys? Or I came into the kitchen and I can't remember where I, what I came in here for. You know, that kind of thing begins to make us worry, especially when there's so much online about, so much news about dementia, and how many people get dementia when you get older, and all that kind of thing. So what we decided to do, what, we're taking a program that's developed by folks from New England. It's a New England cognitive center. And we're, they're, they're actually, they're doing it as actually trying to come up with, you know, showing that it really works and that sort of thing. But we, we're not worrying too much about that. What we're doing is, is just providing this as an opportunity. Gives us a good framework, an opportunity to help people learn, you know, do some exercises in a, in a controlled environment, and where you're going from like a 12-week course. So you meet twice a week, and it's a pretty big commitment. I think it's just for an hour. Yeah, it's an hour, twice a week, and for about 12 weeks. And you get a bunch of different exercises that help you develop those brain synapses that we all need, the extra ones, getting them, getting stronger, so that if we do have some other issues coming along, the effects aren't going to be as bad for us.
So this is not just a website, this is not just a, like a website you go to on your own, and they're actual getting together? How are the classes conducted then?
Well, they're conducted over Zoom. We've been doing it over Zoom, and that seems to, you know, we're doing everything by Zoom these days, aren't we? And you know, one of these days we'll be able to do it in person. But right now, we're still, we're still pretty much stuck with doing the Zoom thing. Just be surprised how well it works. It's really quite good. And they've, they've, you know, with this Mind Sharperner one, they've perfected it pretty well. They've run it through at least a couple of different classes. He did it first with those of us in, who are working for ARA, and some of us were able to attend that. I attended one of the sessions, and it was a lot of fun. It's not easy, and it kind of makes you feel like, oh my goodness, this is, I really need this.
Yeah.
So hopefully, people will see that it's a lot of fun.
All right.
Yeah, so anyway, it's a good program. I'd encourage you to, if you're interested, to call in and, and ask to talk to Ken. The number there is 907-561-3313. Or you can go, you know, to, to our regular site and, and look into it there. They're going to be developing another class. It's going to start on the 4th of January, according to the calendar I've got here in front of me. And it will run through March 31. And it'll be from 10:00 to 11:00 in the morning for Mind Sharperner.
Okay, and then again, the, the phone number for that is 907-561-3313. The website, ALZAlaska.org, and that's the Mind Sharperner. Now, you said that there were, there were kind of two components to Mind Aerobics, the other one being Mind Works. What's that about?
Right, and that one is for folks that already have been identified as having some challenges, not, not really severe yet. In other words, early, early signs, maybe even mild cognitive impairment. And one of the ways we find out who should be where is that when you, if you sign up for one of these, or if you say you want to be doing this, the first thing you'll be doing is getting a very thorough assessment done. It's a little bit more than we do, and we do just the regular screenings. And it's, it's, it's not that difficult. It only takes about five, 10 minutes, 10 minutes or so to complete it. But that will help determine whether you're, whether they think you need to go, you know, you can go into Mind Sharperner or Mind Works. And so Mind Works is, they haven't actually done that one yet, but that's what they're hoping to get a class going.
Oh, I see, so that's, that's coming in the future then?
Well, it's coming. Actually, they're going to start, they would like to start the class in January, on the 17th. And that would be on Mondays and Wednesdays. Again, it would be for two times. And so for folks that are just in the beginning stages, they're, it's more than just, I'm a little worried. And they would, you, you may already have gotten a further assessment, or you may have had a screening, and, and when, if you had the screening done, they said, eh, you need to be looking into this a little bit more. So it's, it's, again, it's more than just, I can't find my keys. You know, it's, it's gotten beyond that. But it's not full-blown dementia necessarily.
And contact information, would that would be essentially the same phone number, same web address?
Same, same stuff, yeah. And you can find all this information online as well. If you go online, you'll find the section that says classes and, and events, and, and you can, but if you're, if you have any questions, further questions about it, Ken would be the guy to go to for that, Ken Helander.
Okay, good. And Will, and if for any of you that are listening to this on the YouTube version, or those of you that want to get this information, once we put our program here with Gay on the YouTube channel, youtube.com/CordovaTV, then we'll, we'll have links and reminders about this information in the description. Now, moving along to first quarter, your, your new calendar looks like it's out. And so, and there's a lot on here, so I think it'd be interesting to kind of do Cliff Notes on, on a number of these different things. Starting in the month of January, I see you have a program called Creating Moments of Joy. And these things, incidentally, are often a mix between things that are directly for somebody that has been diagnosed, and then you've got other things that are primarily for the caregivers. So maybe you can kind of differentiate as we go through them. So what's Creating Moments of Joy about?
Well, I think that's what it's going to be. I actually haven't, haven't seen that one, but I think what they're talking about, how do we, how do we get activities going for folks that, how do we find those moments of joy when you're a caregiver? And one of the, the folks, these classes that are called Caregiving 101s, they're primarily for caregivers. The care, the care recipients, the folks that have dementia, depending on where they are, I've had folks that have attended these, but they tend to be a little bit too much for someone who has a full diagnosis of dementia. So it's mainly, the main target is either for, is for providers of some sort or caregivers, these caregiving 101s.
So when you talk about creating moments of joy, do you expect that that's kind of along the lines of, with the person that you're taking care of? Or is it focused maybe more on, because we've talked before many times about how the caregiving can be very stressful, that maybe it's, it's for the caregivers to have an outlet outside of the caregiving, do you think?
You know, I'm not sure how, however puts this together, because this is one of the things that happens with these, is each one of us, they're either ones that we've done before, that we've relabeled. But my, my way I would look at this is that it's probably for both. Because if we can care, you know, if you're a caregiver, and you can create, figure out how to create moments of joy for your loved one, you're going to get the benefit, benefit of that. You're going to see the moments of joy. So it is for both. If I, if I'm successful in creating a, a good day for someone, or creating a happy time for someone, even if it's just a half an hour, time is happy. That's what's important, and that brings me joy. Because that's my whole purpose as a caregiver, is to bring those moments of joy. So you're right, in a sense, it's for both of us.
All right, and that's scheduled for Wednesday, January 12th at 11:00 AM. And again, you can, this, we'll put this chart up on the YouTube channel, and, and people can also find it at ALZAlaska.org. Now, on the 17th, it looks like you have one scheduled called, What Are the Medicaid Waiver and Senior in Home Programs?
Correct, right. And again, that's going to be just more didactic information. And I don't know if they're going to have a speaker for that. I know when I did this last quarter, I did one similar to this. It was more about guardianship. But when I've done this in the past, I've used someone else. I've used a lawyer, I've used someone who specializes in this. And I think that's what's happening there, that they have a, you know, we could pull it up. That's one of the nice things about this program, is that you can pull up the flyer pretty easily by looking at it, you know, by just tapping on it.
Sure.
And it'll show you what, what's happening there. So like for this one, it says, whether we are caring for a loved one or planning for ourselves, you know, they're going to have Liz Smith, who's a care coordinator in our department, who's going to be talking about that. So she's got, she's more with coordination than just straight education. So she has a bit more information than we do, or more real knowledge. Not that we don't have some, but you know, you want to, with topics like this, you want to get somebody who's a little bit clearer about, because it changes so much, and they're so difficult to keep track of.
You know, it's like when you want to replace your hip. You might be able to muddle through it on your own, but gee, it might be really nice to have an expert do something like that.
I can, I can do the basics. I can tell you, hey, this is a lot of work. You don't want to do it by yourself. I can tell you that.
All right, so that's on the 17th of January. And then move ahead a little under a week to the Friday, the 21st of January, something called Normal Aging Versus Not Normal Aging.
Yeah, and this is a basic one that most of us are, you know, when you're first starting out in something like this, that you're really concerned about. Okay, is, is the fact that I forget what I'm doing when I go into the kitchen normal? The reality is yes. Now, what's not normal? You know, when does it become not normal? Is if I start putting things that belong in the refrigerator into the oven? Or if I can't retrieve why I go in? Usually for most of us, I don't know about you, but what I do is if I, if I end up doing that sort of thing, I have to stop a minute, and then I have to go back to where I started. And then it's like something triggers me to, oh yeah, that's right, I was going for the milk. Or, oh yeah, I meant to be sure to turn on the stove, because I'm going to get ready to do dinner. But we have to go back someplace, and we find it pretty quick, okay? That's normal. That's called normal aging. We all experience that as we get older. There's little, little vessels in our head that are popping all the time, little tiny ones. We don't even notice it.
You know, and a point you've made in the past that I think is valuable to bring up too, is these things are not, these, these classes are not just for people who are already in a situation where they're, where they're giving care. It can be people who think that might be a possibility for themselves or for others, right? So basically, anybody that wants to sit in on one of these Zoom classes is welcome to do so. Do I remember that right?
Absolutely correct. And actually, I encourage everybody to take a look at this, because I don't know about you, but there's a lot of folks, you know, what we're told is that, some people refer to it as a tsunami of gray-haired people coming at us, you know? Who have, have, have developed these, whatever these symptoms are that we identify as being under this umbrella that's called dementia, whether it's Alzheimer's or whatever. One of the other things that's happening here in our society today, I mean, you, everyone, I don't think unless you've been living in a cave somewhere, we all know that there's not good things happening in the world. There's not good, there's not good things, there's not good things happening for the world, period. And there's a lot of stress going on. And stress, additional stress that we're not finding places to deal with, are causing, in a sense, symptoms that look like dementia. They may not be a formal disease process, but that is one of the things, extra stress. If you're, if you're constantly in a state of fear, which, if you look at any, if you look at the news too much, I don't know about you, but I have to limit what I look at, or I'm like overloaded, and I can't think. If we're constant, a constant state of fear, you can't think clearly. And it's as if you have dementia, which is what we're talking, that's what dementia's about, is when a person can't think clearly.
Right. So what you're saying then is the state of affairs can actually cause people to maybe exhibit symptoms that might seem like the beginning of a dementia that actually aren't, just because essentially because of information overload?
Exactly. And, and false information, or fear information, and information that's saying, oh, the sky is falling, the sky is falling, you know, the world's falling apart. Everybody hates everybody, and, and you can't trust anything, and, you know, all that sort of stuff that we hear on the news. And after a while, you just, who can think clearly after that?
So Normal Aging Versus Not Normal Aging is Friday, the 21st. Again, that's one in particular, sounds like me, that might be good for just anybody who's kind of curious about that. And then you have one Tuesday, the 25th, called Vascular Dementia.
Okay, and that's looking at one of the specific types of dementia. Vascular dementia is when you have circulatory problems, a heart problem, or you've had strokes, or really what that's referring to is the fact that somebody has had multiple strokes. It's not just the one big one, but you'll have follow-up little ones. And that's when those, when I talked about the little brain, little cells that are popping all the time, that's when there's more than that. The little ones that are, get together and they form a clump or something. I don't know how that actually works, but that's what we mean by vascular dementia. The brain's not getting enough oxygen.
Okay, so it, as distinguished, say, from Alzheimer's, which is, is still focused around these, these plaques that form in the brain? Is that still the leading thought?
Exactly, yeah.
All right, so this would be something that...
Just one of the major pieces.
Yeah, this, this vascular dementia is something that might create similar symptoms, but not because of those plaques, or not because of Alzheimer's type things, but, but you end up with the same result for a different reason.
Exactly. Exactly. And so you'll have slight differences in, in how it presents, but mostly it's the same, so.
And again, anybody who wants to learn about that is welcome to tune in. And literally, they do these via Zoom. They do ask, by the way, I'm noticing in the notes, to, that people register for them, so a little advanced planning. Then we move into February, and on February 7th, something called How Occupational Therapy Can Help People Living with Dementia With Everyday Activities.
Yes, that there's a whole lot of really cool stuff that the occupational therapists have developed, that we've developed that really can help people living with dementia. You know, as persons, as a disease progresses, their ability to hold a regular fork or spoon declines. And so they have these ones that have bigger clumpy things on the, on the sides of them. They have harder time getting food up on it, so they'll have a plate that has an edge. But there's just all kinds of stuff out there that's really, really useful. And again, that's something that whoever's going to be doing this has either gotten the information themselves, or they have actual occupational therapists who are going to come and talk about it. And let, you know, if you look at the site, you'll see whether they say whether they're having a guest speaker or not.
Sure. Well, and again, as you point out, in this flyer, there are clickable links. You know, I'm just, I'm curious now that you mentioned it, what it says. Well, this looks pretty generic, actually, this particular paragraph. But if people want more of the specifics on what each one of these things is, you can, you can go to that right from inside the flyer.
Right, and then you'll find who you can contact if you really want to contact someone to get more information about it. But yeah, it's very simple. The man that we have now is our, who's our, he's not the IT person, but he's our, he does all this sorts of stuff. He's getting really good. And so it's very easy to register. All you have to do is poke on the thing that says Register here, and it's right there. And you just have to put, you know, a little bit of basic information about who you are, and where you are coming from, and, and that's it. And then you, you will get a, get a reply almost right away, saying, okay, you're registered.
All right, and then moving from the 7th, that, that one with occupational therapy is on February 7th. Couple of days later, Bathing Without the Battle. That sounds somewhat self-explanatory, but let's dive in.
That's a fun one. I don't know how they're going to be doing it, but there's, bathing is often a big battle, can become a big battle when you have some dementia at some point. That seems like most people who develop dementia of some sort will have a really hard time, they can't see the water, they get afraid of water for some reason. And so there's things that you can do though to, to make it less stressful. And it's, it's, there's an approach that you can use. There's also pre, getting things preset up, so that you know the bathroom's warm, you want to make sure that there's contrasting colors. So if they're having problems with vision, in the sense of, you know, telling where the bathtub, where the bathtub starts or not. And, and there's also the things about what can you do to make sure that your house is set up so that it is easier for a person? You know, having, having hand grips that they can get a hold of, making sure that you have a, a good bath seat that they can sit on, being respectful of privacy, those sorts of things. There's all kinds of things you can do. And I don't know if they're going to show any of those clips, but there's some really, I find that they're horrible, but they're funny in a sense. I don't know, I laugh at horrible things. Otherwise, I would cry or get mad.
To be perfectly honest, I have to, I have to confess to you that I thought Vascular Dementia would be a great name for a rock and roll band. You know, so we have to, you have to, you got to find a balance in there.
Yeah, you do. Anyway, there's some, some clips where people are just fighting the whole thing, and it's, it's horrible what can happen if you don't do it right. You can get in these horrible battles. And one, the thing about that is, they may not remember, you know, your love's gone. If you're not approaching them the way that's going to be helpful, if you approach them in a way that they start, you know, their confusion becomes more, then, and you're trying to force it, they're going to remember that you did something they didn't like. And you're going to end up having to redo. You're going to take much, much longer to get a task done. So if your loved one gets to that place where, I don't want to do this, no, don't make me do this, you're better off waiting. You're better off backing off and forgetting about the battle, the bathing. And maybe that they'll tolerate it for a short period of time. My sister, who's down in the lower, down on the lower 48 in assisted living, she doesn't want anybody to help her, but she can't do it by herself. But what she can do is she can wash herself in front of the, in front of the sink. She can use a washcloth and wash up the private areas, and she washed her face, but she can't wash her back, and she can't wash her feet. And so at some point, someone needs to get to the, help her get to where she's okay with somebody helping her.
All right, so finding that balance, then obviously, again, is...
Finding that balance, exactly.
Okay, so that was, that was coming up on the 9th. And then February 19th, Legal Issues for Family Caregivers. I imagine this is kind of an interesting one.
This is one that I'm not doing, but I have a wonderful woman who's from Alaska Legal Services, who's going to be doing a presentation. It's a two-parter. So we have the one on the, it's a Saturday, on the 19th in, in February, and then we have the second part will be in March, on the 19th in March. And that, all of these are about an hour and a half. All of these presentations take about an hour and a half. And usually we'll have periods where, depending on how many people you have in each one, you'll have a chance to ask questions either during or certainly after, you know, after the presentation. And so who's ever doing the presentation usually leaves time, hopefully, so that they can, they can do that.
What are maybe a couple of examples of, of some of the issues that could be covered in, in a session like these?
Yeah, okay, let me, let me get my notes here on what that's about, because is that it's going to be on trusts and what, how do you pay for this? What do you have to do? Things like the Miller's Trust. How do you qualify for Medicaid? So in a sense, it's going to be similar to what we talked about in January, except it's a different person presenting it. So you get a different take on it. And this, she's not going to be answering any, you know, she can't answer specific questions, but she certainly can provide general information. And she's also said that if, if you have some specific questions that you really need to have answered, you can easily make appointments with them at Alaska Legal Services. So she'll be talking about how do you do, do that. You know, who do you go to to get help? Because again, as I said earlier, you can't, you can't do this business of qualifying for Medicaid by yourself. You have to have help with that. And so there's a whole, whole parcel around that, a whole thing around that.
Okay. And again, that's a two-parter, February 19th and then March 19th. Again, don't anybody worry about committing this to memory, because we're going to post the information at, on our Cordova TV YouTube channel. And this flyer has got links. And then you've also always got ALZAlaska.org. We just want to give everybody an overview, so you can kind of see in Cliff Note version what's coming. I see the next one in February on the 21st. Understanding Supported Decision-Making Agreements for Seniors. What are those?
Oh boy, yeah, that's, that's a whole, that's a whole, something relatively not new in the sense of it's been around for a while, but something that's a new way of presenting this kind of thing. And how do you, how do you make decisions? How do you, how do you make decisions when you've got somebody who's going to be, you know, they're legal? When you've got somebody that's needing support, and how do you do this? When do you do it? And Lisa Woznick is going to be presenting that one. She's the Administrator for the Alaska State Association of Guardianship and Advocacy. She's really sharp. She used to work for us. She was actually one of my bosses, and I've had her within 14 years of I've been working here, and she's wonderful. So it's needing, people needing assistance receive support from trusted individuals, rather than assigning a sort of decision-maker. So it's, it's more about, you know, how do you do this thing of finding people you can trust to help you make decisions, especially if your loved one is like in that, it's almost like a, a no-man's-law zone, where they haven't quite got to the point where they can't legally sign for themselves. There's different levels of legality that you have. And so most people can sign a power of attorney without any problem, but they can also un-sign until they get to the point where they're legally not capable of doing that anymore. And so Lisa's going to be talking about how do you, where do you go to find that sort of stuff, help with that?
Okay. And then fast forward a few days to the 25th. Oh boy, here's one, not just for people with dementia, but, but a great, great in the, in the sense of massive and gravitas, The Driving Dilemma: Knowing When to Brake. All right, here we go.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is, this is a big one, because just like with Bathing Without Battles, only this one is, is, you're going to have to get on top of it sooner. Your person is probably still going to be able to, they, they, they know that they can still drive, right? They can still physically do it. And by this point, they're going to get to the place where they're concrete thinking. And by this point, they're going to get to the place where they're concrete thinking. So if you tell them, "Grandpa, you can't drive anymore," he's going to say, "Oh, yes, I can." And he can, it's just he shouldn't.
Right, right.
And so therein lies the difference. And so what we're going to be talking about there is giving you some pointers of how do you bring this up? How do you, when do you start talking about it? How do you do it? And for some people, it's no big deal. I mean, the, the person themselves recognize, oops, I've had too many close calls, I need to turn on, turn on my keys. My dad fortunately did that.
Yeah.
He, he had a couple of really close calls, and so he said, "Here," Barbara, his, his wife at that time, you know, my stepmother, he said, "Here, you're doing the driving from now on." Folks with dementia aren't necessarily going to do, give that up very easily.
Sure.
In fact, you can get into a big hassle. And so there's lots of tips, there's lots of tricks that you can do to prevent that without having a big battle.
Well, you know, and you rose a really good point, brought up a really good point there, of course, is that, you know, like with, with, with bathing, there, that, that's a situation that may be challenging, but nobody else's life is at stake. When you're talking about driving though, just if you, if you soft pedal that too much, if you say, "Oh, okay, well, I'm, I'm just, I'll, I'll wait and deal with this problem next week because I don't want to make my, my grandma or grandpa mad," you know, then you, you may be on a, I mean, literally a crash course to wrecking somebody else's life if you don't get a handle on that, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. You know, and we've all heard stories of that. I mean, there's been, I think the one I'm thinking of is there was a, an older guy that was driving in, in Los Angeles or some, some city, and he stepped on the, on the gas pedal instead of the brake.
Yeah.
And crashed into a bunch of people and killed folks.
Oops.
You know, you don't want that to happen.
No.
You also don't want your loved one to hurt themselves, you know?
So there are strategies then, it sounds like, it sounds like one of the things that's provided then in this Driving Dilemma class is strategy, so it doesn't just, you know, a full-on screaming match, but actually some, some techniques and, and methods. Not only, if I remember right, you've mentioned in the past, not just to deal with a situation with its, when it's upon you, but also to prepare for it.
Exactly, exactly. There's things you can do right now. We all should be doing this right now. You know, I should be looking, I can't, it, it terrifies me to think of when, not terrifies, but I really do not want to get to the point where I cannot drive, or I should not drive, let's put it that way. I think, you know, that's the thing, that kind of memory, that mechanical memory stays with us no matter what. But, you know, we, sometimes we get physically, we can't do it, but here in Alaska especially, can you imagine not, I mean, in Cordova, it may not make that big a difference, but it's just so far you can drive. And you can walk most places. That's one of the advantages of living where you guys do.
It's also, it also doesn't get to 35 or 40 below like it does where you are, so yeah.
Right, but here I am living in the Copper Basin, I can't go anywhere unless I drive, you know? Unless somebody drives me.
Sure.
You know, it's like, oh my goodness, it's like, oh, I'm going to be that dependent on somebody else.
You know, the whole, the loss of freedom dynamic, the loss of, of, you know, obviously perceived as a, as a loss of dignity when you, when you lose that ability. And so how to balance all of those delicate things, they'll be able to, to cover a great deal of that, it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah, we talk about that in that program. It's a good one. And as I said, there's lots of, there's lots of ideas for how to deal with it so you're not the bad guy.
Okay. And then we move into March, and on March 9th, something called Next Steps After a Diagnosis of Dementia.
Yes. Yeah, very important. And unfortunately, this is something that we're hearing more and more about, is that, you know, that they go to a doctor and the doctor says, "Yep, yep, you got dementia," or "Yep, yep, you've got Alzheimer's. See you later. Go out and have a good time." Now, they don't say that, but you know, that sometimes that's the feeling people get, is they don't get any idea from the doctors. The doctors don't give them any clue of where to go for help. And of course, where you want to go for help is ARA.
Yeah.
Alzheimer's Resource.
Sure.
And, and what we've done, actually, it's kind of cool, we now have these prescription pads that we've put together. That, I should try to send you one of these because, get you some of these, because it's, it's like a little script pad, and from the office of four, a date, and then it's recommend the following consultation, memory screening, education classes, support groups, mind aerobics. So the doctor can actually click on one of these and say, "Here, take this." And at the bottom, there's our contact information in the various different places that we have. So we're really making an effort to educate the doctors, and so we're trying to flood doctors' offices with these, with these prescription pads, so they can have something they can hand to the person rather than just saying, "I don't really know what you want to do next."
Yeah, well, of course, I mean, that's going to vary a great deal. We have to give a little bit of rope to the doctors who, who are not, you know, a general practitioner isn't going to be able to, to really get into the weeds of what should happen next, but it would be, it absolutely would be good for them to recognize that there are resources available and willing be, be willing to point people there.
Exactly. The other thing we find with, with doctors is that a lot of times, they're not going to listen to the family member.
Hmm.
And what we're trying to educate medical professionals about is that when you have someone with dementia, you're not, it's not just the person that with dementia who is the client.
Yeah.
It's also the family member. It's also the care provider. And they really are the key person that they need to be connecting with. And a lot of them don't do that, even when you have a power of attorney. I hear stories all the time where, where a doctor, you know, kind of ignores the wife or the, the partner, the child, or whoever it is, especially if they're, if the client, you know, we have this HIPAA thing.
Right, right.
Where they are not, they're legally not able to talk to you and, and tell you anything unless you have a, a written document that says you can.
Hmm.
One of the things we've run into, and this is something for those, anybody who has a, a family member who's connected to the VA, apparently the VA has their own power of attorney paperwork. And you want to get your loved one, if, if they're a veteran, you want to get their, your loved one to sign their power of attorney paperwork, because they do not recognize any of the other ones.
That's interesting.
So, you know, I, I'm hearing from, from especially spouses that are finding themselves in this dilemma where if their loved one is not, you know, unhappy with them for whatever reason, they can't get any information, or they can give information to the VA, but it's really hard to find somebody who's going to listen.
Yeah.
Unless you have the paperwork that says under, under VA, power of attorney. So again, it's not a simple thing, this thing of trying to care with someone. And again, that would be another place for this next step after diagnosis. I don't know if that's part of what whoever's going to be doing that is going to be talking about, but it's certainly something to be thought about, is...
Well, it is a good, it's a good example of something that has been discussed in the past, too, as, as you have mentioned with many of these, they sort of evolve, but, so they're not the same thing every time, but you can get a pretty good idea based on the past experience. So that's the 9th of March. The 19th, like we already said, is part two of that Legal Issues for Family Caregivers. And then we move on to March 22nd, Activity Box Ideas for People Living with Dementia.
Yeah. JR, sorry, I interrupted you, but the second, the, the second part is going to be dealing with something a little different than just the trust.
Oh, the legal thing?
He's going to be looking at, yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
It's a different one. It's a different presentation. It's, it's a, it's a series kind of thing that we're doing.
Oh, so it's not just a continuation?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have blown by that then. So, so Legal Issues Part Two.
Yeah. Legal Issues Part Two is, she's going to, the same person, same, same lawyer, is going to be talking about what are the effects of legal incapacity on things like the ability to pursue things, legal kinds of things, like selling property or divorce, if that's what's coming up. In other words, if the person is no longer capable, legally capable of signing paperwork, signing over any legal documents, you, it does affect how it's going to happen, you know, what's going to happen. The caregiver can file for divorce, but if it's the person themselves who wants to, they can't.
Yeah.
They're no longer capable of signing any kind of paperwork, legal paperwork.
Okay.
And so she's going to be talking about how does, what, what happens in that, you know, what do you do? How do you deal with that? When they, when a person can no longer sign legal documents? You want to be sure there's someone who can for them.
Okay. So that would be one of the, one of the central issues of the, the second part of Legal Issues for Family Caregivers.
Right.
That's March 19th.
Yeah. And she, yeah, and she's going to be open for any kind of other kind of questions that you might have, but that's the main piece of, that she's going to be going over when, when she's actively talking.
All right, then what about the Activity Box? I'm intrigued by that.
Well, this is something, again, that one of our wonderful creative care group, education specialists came up with, she got a hold of this idea, is that we've actually developed activity boxes that we can send out to you with lots of different ideas for idea, uh, different activities that you can do. And so she's going to be talking about what kinds of things we have in that, and what kinds of things you could get if you wanted to ask for one of these boxes. So it's, it's one of those, it's kind of like a specialty looking at activities, because activities is a big deal for different levels. You know, when I've got somebody who's in one stage where they, if you have somebody, they can still do things pretty much for themselves, but they need it set up a bit, they need a little bit of help in getting started, you know, that's different. You'll have different kinds of activities. You'll have things where people can still do, to a certain extent, crossword puzzles, or maybe they can do number, you know, finding the words, you know, finding the, those kinds of, word finding kind of things. And then if they, if, if they get further into it, into, into the dementia piece, they're going to need different kinds of activities. And so again, they're looking at what kinds of ideas were you going to want in these kind of different boxes?
Okay.
That's kind of a cool idea. I think it's lovely, and we, we do have them and sending them out to people.
Good. All right, so that's on the 22nd of March, if people want to learn about that topic. On March 25th, you've got one, which again, is one that makes a lot of sense. My wife will probably make me watch this one just so she can wag her finger at me, but particularly in the context of, of Alzheimer's or another dementia, the concept of downsizing and decluttering.
Decluttering, exactly. You know, this is something you want to start sooner than later, let me tell you. And again, as you said, JR, it's not just for folks that have dementia, but you can imagine, and actually, this is, I have that story with my sister, is that we were not able to get her to do that. I was not there. You know, I'm up here in Alaska, she's down there in North Carolina. She was living in this trailer that was absolutely chock-a-block full of all kinds of crap, all kinds of stuff, and she couldn't, wasn't able or capable of doing it with friends or with herself. She could not begin thinking about it. And some of us can't anyway, but as she was developing dementia, it became more and more evident. And so what ended up having is, we ended up having to throw most of it out.
Hmm.
Which is heartbreaking, because she couldn't, she wasn't capable of making any of her own decisions around stuff. So I just had to try to think about, okay, she would like these things, she would like this sweater, but I don't need that sweater, or, you know, these books, but not those books, or this music, but not, I, I had to, I, I threw away two big, my daughter and I were there, and we ended up having to junk a whole bunch of stuff, you know? Some of it we were able to recycle, but some of it we couldn't. And it was just, it was heartbreaking for me to have to do that, one. But for her, she lost a bunch of stuff that maybe she would have liked to have had around.
Yeah.
You know, I did the best I could in choosing. So it's far better that you do this together, if you can.
Okay.
And again, the sooner you get started on that, the better it is.
And is part of the idea that, that too much stuff is just going to contribute to the challenges somebody with, with one of the dementias is already experiencing, it just exacerbates it?
Exactly, exactly. You know, you're going to get to the point where they can't choose if they have lots of different kinds of clothing.
Yeah.
They're only going to want to wear one or two.
Right.
And so why have them? There was a wonderful example of that, and again, I don't know if this is one they're going to be using in the, in the presentation, but it's one of my favorites, is there was a family that, her mom had lots of stuff, and she loved to go to secondhand stores and shop in secondhand stores. And so what this lady did, rather than taking her to an outside one, she took one of the bedrooms that wasn't being used, and she set it up like a shop.
Oh.
With her mother's clothing. She took her mother's clothing, the extra stuff that she wasn't wearing, and she'd put it, put it in the shop, and then her mother would go in there and shop.
I'll be darned.
And pick out her own stuff, but she didn't remember that it was her own stuff, right? And so it's this lovely idea of how do you do this thing? So we weren't keeping, piling up more and more and more, but then at some point, she was able to start taking some of the things and sending them down to another store.
Hmm.
Right? So again, how do you do this thing? When you've got somebody who has dementia, who is no longer able to make their own decisions about things, you don't want to just, you want to be careful about what you get rid of.
Sure. Well, and I, you know, I really like, the, the recurring theme here that you can see would be important with the bathing, with the driving, with the decluttering, is that by working with an organization like yours, we have all these minds that have, that have collaborated over the years to come up with ways to do things that may seem completely overwhelming, and that are just going to turn into World War III every single time you have to deal with them. Strategies have been devised and are available if somebody can just take the time to, to learn what they are and apply them, and I would imagine take some of the potential for hostility out of all of this?
Absolutely, absolutely. And it becomes almost a fun thing, you know? And most of these ideas have come from caregivers that have tried something and it worked, or they've tried something and it didn't work.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, the bathing with the battles, or whatever it is, well, it didn't work for me to try it this way, but this did work. And yeah, as you said, if we can get together, that's where support groups are so great.
Yeah.
All the ideas that I've mentioned there have come from caregivers. Myself included, you know, the things that have worked with my sister. So it's not like, it's not like rocket science, but we do, we, we're so much better when we can get ideas from other people as well. It helps our brains start working again.
Sure, well...
And when you're a caregiver, you're so overwhelmed.
Yeah.
That you're not going to be able to think creatively until you have someone else around you that can, "Oh, yeah, oh, that's a great idea. Oh, I bet this would work."
Yeah, yeah. Well, and particularly being able to separate things that have worked from things that maybe haven't worked as well. And sometimes you can look at an idea that, that didn't work for somebody and think of a way to sort of massage it into, into actually becoming something effective, which I imagine has happened too. Now, moving from March 25th to the last one of these, these, these special events that you have in first quarter, Home and Community Safety.
Uh-huh. It's really important. How, what do you need to do to make your home safe for someone with dementia? You know, one of the things that happens for folks with, as they develop the dementia is their perception goes. So you don't want to have, like if you have a plate and it's all the same color, you know, you want to have varying contrasting colors so they can really see it. Some people will do the thing of, of actually putting, if it's a bathtub and it's all white, you put something of color on the, on the top, on the, on the top of the tub, the red, you know, the thing you step over. See, I'm losing my words here.
Yeah.
You step over, uh, you, you put a strip on it, or you put a towel down. It's a different color, so they can actually see it.
Hmm.
Little things like that. Um, lighting. What kind of lighting? Making sure you don't have things they can trip over.
Yeah.
Um, keeping things as decluttered as possible. So they're not gonna have things that are gonna fall over if they bump into it, or that they're gonna, if they lose their ability to, to tell where they're going, even. Uh, signage, you know, that sort of thing. And then, of course, community safety. What do we need to do as a community to make sure that our, that folks that have dementia are safe?
Hmm. What would be some examples of that?
Well, things like, um, making sure that people know, if you've got a, if you've got someone who wanders, who should I tell? Uh, should I let the, the, my neighbors understand that if they see my father walking, you know, coming down the road, and it's in the middle of the winter, and he doesn't have his winter coat on?
Yeah.
And you know, I'm gonna let my neighbors know that my father has dementia. And please let me know, not to call the police.
Yeah.
That's another one. That's a big one that we're looking at right now, is, because we've had folks that have had the experience of, you know, their loved ones begin to get out of hand. They get, uh, they can get aggressive and violent or whatever, and they've had to call 911.
Hmm.
And then if the trooper doesn't realize what they're coming to, because some folks, especially if in their beginning stages, they can look and find, just sound, look fine. But they're not necessarily thinking clearly all the time. But they can look like it, and they can sound like it for the moment the trooper comes in. In fact, I've seen, have heard situations where it's not the caregiver that calls the troopers, it's the person with dementia.
Yeah.
They'll call and say, "I'm being kept prisoner. This lady's, you know, trying to kill me with food," or, you know, "She's not feeding me."
Sure.
And, so you want, you want the trooper. So we're looking at a way of making sure, especially in bigger cities, where, uh, it's a little easier in smaller communities, you can just go in and talk to the troopers and let them know. Um, you know, who needs to know that you're dealing with someone with dementia?
That's interesting.
And that's one example. Okay?
Yeah. Um, and I wonder, is there any, uh, what about, like, signage, uh, in a yard, or, or in a, is that, I mean, obviously, that would be up to the individual. Has that been considered, uh, of, possibly value, or, or maybe does it detract?
I know.
Which, because I mean, you can see pitfalls there.
Yeah. Well, I know that, that, uh, I know some people who have put a, put a sign on their door that says, "My loved one has dementia."
Hmm.
Uh, you, you can, and on the door, so that when somebody's coming to the house, they know what to expect.
Yeah.
And have a little bit better idea. And this is, again, part of this whole education piece. Uh, uh, you know, actually, you've got somebody there in Cordova that is beginning to wanting, wanting to work. We've talked about it several times. I'm not sure where she is now, but, uh, hopefully, we will begin looking at, how do we make Cordova, what can we need to do to make Cordova not just a dementia-friendly community, but a dementia-competent community?
Well, I think being on the radio is a very critical component of that, not that I'm biased or anything.
Yeah, yeah. No, you're absolutely correct. You know, that, I think being on the radio is one thing.
Well, and I mean, I am very, in all, in all seriousness, I'm very interested in any way that we can partner with you guys to do that, not just these talk shows, but maybe something on a more regular basis. So, we should have that conversation.
Absolutely, I'd love that.
Sometime. We're getting to the end of our time slot here. I want to point out to folks that this flyer also has, uh, you know, these are the, the kind of, the, the special things that come up in the first quarter. There are also regular things, something you have called Savvy Caregiver, that provides caregivers skills and knowledge needed to provide the highest level of care for loved ones and themselves. There's a chorus program called Voices of the Last Frontier, Memory Cafe. Uh, you talked about Mind Sharper and Mind Works, that's all in here. Other webinars for professionals and things that have to do with art and pets and comfort pets. I like that idea.
We have Comfort Pets. We have Comfort Pets. Yeah, please call in about that, because these guys are really fun. And if you've got somebody that likes animals, but they're maybe beyond the point where they can really take care of them, or maybe they've had a love, a pet pass away, and you haven't gotten another one, you know, some folks, when they get dementia, they can handle, you know, they, they actually get to feeling like it's a real pet.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I, I still have stuffed animals that I hug.
Sure, sure. So we will, like I said, we'll be sure that this flyer, with all its internal clickables, makes it on to the online version of this program at youtube.com/cordovatv, uh, as soon as we have a chance to, to get it up there. And, uh, it's always informative, Gay, when we get to visit. Any final thoughts before, you know, as we put a bow on it here?
Yeah, there's just a couple more places on us that I wanted to point out. One is Art Links. It's a wonderful program. If you've got someone that you're needing activities for, check out, out Art Links. Same thing with the Memory Cafe and the, and the, uh, Voices of the Last Frontier. These are the ones that we do with our partner. You know, if you've got somebody and you're taking care of them, or if you've got somebody in a, like in your long-term care facility, they do that. They, they, people participate from those places as well. So, uh, check those out. It's really fun. And then there's the statewide caregiver support groups. And that's a, that's a whole other flyer, but at the, at the bottom there, you'll see that. There's a long list of caregiving, of, of, uh, support groups for caregivers. I highly recommend anybody who's having any challenges to, uh, take, take a look at these. Uh, it's a really wonderful way of staying, of getting the support you guys are needing. You can't do this by yourself.
No.
You just can't.
No, and I, you know, it's...
And you need to talk with others.
As introverted as a, as a, as a person might be, and I, I, I consider myself highly introverted, but no, I would never want to, particularly having talked with you and hearing about how much, you know, how many resources and how many good ideas are out there. It, uh, it would behoove any of us who think, who might be inclined to think, "No, I want to do this alone," to get past that and, uh, apply some reason and, and consider working with people who know what's going on. You also have, it looks like, a fairly, uh, robust social media presence. If people want to follow you, it looks like Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn, maybe, things like that?
Yeah, yeah. There's a fair, a fair, a, a caregiving, um, Facebook page. So you have to apply for that. You have to be a caregiver to get into that one. It's a special one. And that's a lot of good stuff. Yeah, we have, we're doing more and more with that.
And the links for that are in this flyer as well. So, um...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's, it's always a delight. Like I said, Gay, so much information. And, uh, we will get this, we will get this posted. Uh, if people don't want to wait around for us to do it, I assume it's pretty easily findable at ALZAlaska.org.
Yep. And you'll find a lot of other, other information on there as well. We also do care coordination for, for folks in some parts of the state. I think you guys have somebody who does that for you. But I'm not sure on that one.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay.
That's a whole other topic.
Hey, well, that'll give us something to, get us something to talk about next time. Yeah, it's always a pleasure. And, uh, we certainly wish you and yours the very best for, for a great holiday season.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I hope everybody stays safe. Keep it simple. Keep it safe. Keep it warm. We'll talk to you guys later.
Wisdom, wisdom, wisdom for the ages. Always a delight, always very informative when we get to speak with Gay Wellman of Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska. And I know we mentioned it a lot, but want to make sure that you are aware that when this program goes on our YouTube channel, youtube.com/cordovatv, there will be a link to a PDF of the document that we were talking about that has all this information. And in that document, when you download it, there are links that'll take you directly to the websites for each individual program. So you can really learn a lot about them, put some of these things on your calendar, and, uh, be sure that you're able to, to join in. Lots of good information in there. Speaking of the YouTube channel, by the way, the program that we did earlier this week with the children's author, uh, with the Little Spark book, that is now up on the YouTube channel as well. Robbie has notified me. So if you didn't have a chance to hear that interview, feel free to do so. And there are links to more information in the description of that video, too. That's what's fun about having a YouTube channel for a radio station, is we can store our interviews, so you can hear them again anytime you want on any device. And often, we can provide you supplemental material as well. So, again, check out, uh, youtube.com/cordovatv for that children's story interview. And then this one will go up very soon as well. Big thanks to Cordova Wireless Communications, who along with Cordova Telecom Cooperative, I'm still getting used to saying telecom cooperative, which is what they are, but I'm just slow. Those two organizations bring millions of dollars into the community, 10 to 12 million bucks a year of, of outside money, that then, you know, the, the folks that study this stuff say a dollar that comes in from out of town, usually will circulate through the town up to seven times before going anywhere else. So that's a big boost, because we don't have to fish for it, or grow it, or manufacture it, or anything. It just comes right in. So